We will now call this meeting to order. We invite members of the board and community in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance with us. So everyone, please stand. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Mrs. Peterson, do we have any requests for public participation? Thank you. Our next item is the approval of our consent agenda.
Madam President.
Mrs. Schwartz.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Sieg. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Your motion carries. The next item on the agenda... Oh, I apologize. We have a video. A video that Mrs. Peterson is going to show. Thank you, Mrs. Peterson. Our next item is the approval of... I apologize. Oh, another video. My apologies. Oh, yeah.
The first thing I'd be clear about when visiting with education leaders, these dollars are here to make children whole, not here to make adults whole.
Student achievement should be the focus of every adult in a school system, from the school board president all the way down to the principal and pairs and teachers. It might look a little different for every student, but that should be our primary focus. The training program, Be Legendary School Board Training, really is a mind shift for boards and superintendents. Boards aren't experts on education, but they are elected representatives, and the public tasks them with facilitating the strategic plan and implementing what needs to happen in the school district.
The main thing is, are our students getting the outcomes academically that they deserve? And so, helping our school board leaders understand how to set those student outcome goals, and then when we're asked, what difference did that money make? We're going to be able to have hard, solid data because our student outcomes went from here to here.
Ninety percent of board members' time is spent on adult behaviors, such as building the budget, facilities, and grounds, and maintenance, and operations. And normally, less than 10% is actually spent talking about student outcomes.
I truly believe that student outcome-focused governance is the hope for our nation because almost every state in which we go, our third grade reading scores are simply not where they need to be.
One of our main beliefs is that the better your board is and the more training your board does, the better off your district and your students will be.
So, this training was just awesome because, number one, it really puts the focus back on student outcomes. Each district in North Dakota had the opportunity to choose from several possible goals, and so you kind of customize them to what you think your district needs. So for us, focusing on the performance for third grade reading was focusing on eighth grade math, and then focusing on to make sure our students at the high school were choice-ready.
This training provided the education and the resources that we, as policymakers, decision-makers, need to make better decisions so that our students can continue to succeed.
There are a lot of things that capture the attention of boards. Most of them, unfortunately, aren't actually going to drive performance improvements. The nature of this work is to give boards the tools they need to actually be focused on the things that matter, to be intensely focused on improving student outcomes.
To change behaviors with our students, I strongly believe that it has to come from the top. Our common goal has to come back to the students and what we expect them to become in the future.
We invest professional development in our teachers, our superintendents, then our building leaders. It's now time for us to expect that our school boards have the same type of training.
All of my work in public education has made it clear to me that student outcomes don't change until adult behaviors change.
Thank you, Mrs. Peterson. I do want to add, that video was submitted along with 12,000 entries from all 50 states and other countries, and it was, it received a gold award, one of three. So, thank you for all the work you guys do. The next one is, or our next item is the approval of our agenda. Do we have a motion?
Madam President.
Mrs. Schwartz.
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you. Do we have a second? A second by Mr. Wilkie. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries. We are now moving on to our superintendent's report. Dr. Luton?
Yeah, just real quick, some summer updates. Right now, our early childhood program for the year is at 108 for next year. Summer RASP is at 191 out of 200 slots, so we have a little bit of space left. Kindergarten enrollment for next year is at 263. If you remember last year, at the beginning of the year, I think we were about 315. So, we're trending towards that number probably again. We'll see. Generally, there's a push after the Fourth of July. People rush in and register their kids for kindergarten, so... Which is understandable, I think, as a parent, as a kindergartner, sometimes you're never quite sure they're going to be ready this year or next year, so we get it. Summer school enrollment, we don't have that yet. That starts on July 24th and runs through August 11th. Extended school year for students with disabilities started today. So, a lot of things going on, but those are kind of just some quick updates.
Okay, thank you for the report.
Oh, also, there is an attachment in there, the Adult Learning Center. They had their audit this past year, and there's a lot of commendations in there for Ms. Hurt and her crew. Just, they do a phenomenal job, so... And those are outlined in that page, that audit report, so...
I do notice in there, Dr. Luton, there's also a date for July to build the board.
Yeah, we'll need to decide when we want to have that. We kind of forego that here in June, just because the schedules didn't work out. But we'll need to do that the week before the Fourth, on that, I think, 29th or 30th, or July 6th. So, board members will have to check out their schedules, and any of those dates work for me. We'll probably do the lunch thing again, just because I know we have busy schedules.
Okay. Did you guys want to do that right now, or wait? I will be gone the 29th and the 30th, so the 6th works best for me. But if I... If the other dates work better for you guys, I don't need to be here.
6th worked for me.
6th. Dr. Luton, for you as well?
Yeah, that works for me.
Okay.
And, you know, we'll be able to digest the survey from Mr. Siemens here soon, and hopefully have some conversation at the Build the Board workshop, and then the board meeting the following Monday, so...
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Luton. We are now moving on to our business topics. The first item on the agenda is our school perception survey results, and we have Dr... or Mr. Darren Severs on Zoom. Welcome. Hello? He's on mute.
I need to unmute my microphone. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Well, thanks for having me. I've got a PowerPoint to share with you of the survey results. And before I get started, I just wanted to express to the board what a pleasure it was to work with Dr. Luton throughout this process. He... His passion for making Dickinson Public Schools better is evident, and in this domain. Tonight, I'm going to give you your results on the facility aspect of trying to improve learning environments for the kids in Dickinson. So, I'm going to give you a summary, background and summary of our findings tonight. So, again, we surveyed back in, back in, in April and May, and we worked for several months to put this survey together. Tonight, what I'm going to share with you is, is going to follow this agenda. We're going to give you brief background about our company, so you understand who we are and how we approach things. Then I'll get right into the survey, the respondent information, and then the results and analysis. And then at the end, I'll take any and all questions and comments that you have, once you hear our findings. So, a little bit about our company, School Perceptions, we've been in existence for 21 years, and our, our mission is to strategically help educational leaders gather, organize, and use data to make strategic decisions. We're an independent, third-party company. We've done over 10,000 staff, parent, student, and community surveys for school improvement, and we've helped over 900 districts in all 50 states navigate the planning and referendum planning process. This is the team that worked on this project for you. Our president and founders, Bill Foster, Rob and I, Rob is our research director. He's got his PhD in research and statistics, so he helps us analyze data to make sure that the recommendations and findings we have for you are reliable. And then Carrie worked behind the scenes with us to gather all the email addresses and all that data behind the scenes to launch the survey, the addresses, all those things to get the survey in the hands of your residents. And again, I'm, I'm the project manager. My name is Darren Severs. I'm new to the company. I'm coming up on my one-year anniversary with the company. Prior to working for School Perceptions, they were, I was a customer for them. I worked in a rural Milwaukee school district as superintendent for the last 10 years. District very similar in size to Dickinson. We were a district of 3,500 students. And over the course of the last decade, we used them for several referendum surveys, just like you've gone through. And I, I became so passionate about their process that they actually asked me to join their company. So now Minnesota, North and South Dakota are my territories. So, that moves me home to my roots in Minnesota. So, here's our process. So, we mailed a paper survey to every property owner in the Dickinson Public School District. They were given the option to fill out the paper, the paper copy of the survey and return it directly to us, or they could take the survey online with a one-time user code. Both the paper survey and the online survey have an encrypted one-time-use code, so there's no way for, for anyone to stuff the bout box on either end of the questions. They're used once. In fact, we had several emails from people saying that they entered their code, and then stopped midway, and then it locked them out, so we had to reopen it for people. It's a very, very protected process. So, here's where we're just going to start to get into your local results. The deadline for your survey was May 22nd. You had 1,501 respondents. We were very pleased to see that many respondents, because the more respondents, the, the lower our margin for error is. So, right now, statistically speaking, your margin for error would be plus or minus 2.6%. That's something important for us all to hold on to as we get down to our findings and recommendations, that margin for error. Within your data, this is your age distribution of the respondents. This bell curve is very, very typical of what we see. Sometimes, most recently, I gave four of these presentations last week, and we had a community that had 37% of their people, 65-plus. In your case, the 35% fell in the 35- to 44-year-olds, and that's largely your parents. And that's no surprise that we would, we would have the parents responding at the highest rate. We do cross-analyze that with your census data. In your community, parents 35- to 44 make up 12.1% of the population, but they responded at a 35% rate. So, as we go through your results, it's very important for us to, to correct that and, and allocate the, the population based on the true resident population, not on the percentage that replied to the survey, because we wanted to be accurate with how many could actually vote. The other group that we watch very closely is the 65-plus. Those are the senior citizens that are on fixed income, they're in the retirement years, and they're a little bit more reluctant to have their taxes go up for a school project. So, that's a group that we looked at very closely. They make up 12.5% of your population, and they were 16% of your respondents. Okay, next up, of the respondents, 96% are, were residents. You may ask yourself, well, why were there any, anyone replying to the survey that wasn't a resident? Well, within those that said no, you may have staff members that work in your district, but that do not live there. Also, there may be property owners that got a copy of the mail, of the, the survey in their mail, but they not, may not reside there. It may be a commercial property, or it could be a, a vacation property that they don't live in full-time. Going forward, all the statistics I'll present to you will be strictly on the 96% that say they live there, because we want to analyze the results based on only those people that can go to the polls and vote on behalf of any question you may put in front of them. Next up, it's also important, on every survey we do, to break out the municipalities. Now, in your case, there aren't a lot of disaggregated community municipalities, but in some of our districts, we may have eight, 10, 12 different tax municipalities that we have to account for. Largely, most of your residents are in Dickinson itself. But this tells you the other areas that the respondents came from, Gladstone, et cetera. Next up, of the respondents, 52% were parents, 22% were employees. Also, we asked them some tax questions. Do you own property within the district that is taxed as commercial? And do you own property that is taxed as agricultural? We do everything we can to understand who the respondents are, and then we can disaggregate it by those same methods. Another very important question we asked within the survey is, how do you like to hear from the school district? This is particularly critical, because out of this presentation, it will be very important to report back to the community the findings. As a society, I think we're very good at giving surveys, but just as important as giving them, is telling people the results of the survey. Otherwise, people tend to stop taking them. If they never give the results, they, they get a survey fatigue, and then they, they stop taking them. So, there's two populations I really want to talk specifically about within this communication survey, and it's going to be a really critical part of the survey going here forward. So, the blue bar are your parents. Parents make up typically 25% of every community. As I shared with you earlier, we've done over 10,000 surveys, and in nearly every community that we survey, parents make up 25% of the population. That means that if you're not a parent and not staff, you're the other 75%, because staff make up less than 1% of a community. So, as far as communication, parents said that they prefer emails, they like to go on social media, and the school district website. With the non-parents, non-staff, we don't have their email, and they, they, you may not have as easy access to them, they tend to look towards the Dickinson press for their school news, social media to a lesser extent, and then to a lesser extent, still the school district website. So, the local media presence is very important for a school district like Dickinson, because that's one of the, the places that your non-parents, non-staff go to, to learn about what's going on in the school. So now, for the results and analysis. These next several slides you've seen before, because you approved the survey before we launched it. I'll remind you that we did some facility background educating with the survey, where we talked about the increasing enrollment. We talked about the systems within the school that are failing and need improvement and replacing. And we gave more background beyond what was needed at the high school, and talked about some of the needs at the elementary school as well. And then we asked our first question within the survey. We said, would you support the district pursuing a bond referendum to update and expand our schools based on that overview of needs? And here are your first results. The gray bar represents the staff. They overwhelmingly, at 88%, said that they would support the district looking at a bond referendum. Parents responded at a 73% approval rate, and non-parents, non-staff, that very large group that makes up 75% of your community, also responded at a favorable 49% rate, when you look at the corresponding percents that said no. 2% for staff, 11% for parents, 31% for non-parents, non-staff. Now, this is before we've asked any questions related to money, and we do that for a reason. We want to gauge, within a community, before there's any price tag attached, how do you feel about us even studying a referendum? Because if the results after this question came in flatly no, then there's no reason to go any further and even start to analyze costs or ask any questions, because they're not even in favor of you looking into it. In this case, you absolutely have support for looking into some kind of phasing to improve the topics we covered earlier about failing systems and being out of space at the elementary school. Now, there's one more statistic here I'd like to point out, and then we'll, we'll dive further into the more specific questions, and that is the not sure. 10% of your staff weren't sure, 16% of the parents were not sure, and 20% of the non-parents, non-staff were not sure. Want to point that out, because we'll talk about those not sure's later on in my presentation. Now, we did go further and talk about a base project that focused specifically on the high school. We outlined the elements that we were looking to expand the high school upon, and then we, we, we gave them some detail about what would come with this cost, and laid out for the taxpayers and residents that it would cost $69 million to renovate and expand the high school. Here's further details about, about the questions we asked. And then we put very flatly in front of them what the tax impact would be for all types of property owners, and at different valuations. On all of our surveys, we tend to use a $100,000 baseline for the tax impact on the $69 million project. Not that there's many $100,000 homes out there anymore in this, in this white-hot housing market in the Midwest, but that's a very easy number for people to, to multiply their, their assessed value by, so they can apply the tax impact to their home. So, here's where the results came in for the three different groups. When we asked them if they would support a $69 million bond referendum to renovate and expand the high school, the staff replied with 83% approval. 56% definitely yes, 27% probably yes, 11% undecided, and 6% in the no range. But again, I'll remind you, staff are less than 1% of your voting public. I do want to point out that typically, our average for undecideds is in the 11% to 12% range. So, staff held true to that statistic. Now, with parents who make up 25% of your, your community, 72% said that they would probably or definitely vote yes to that $69 million bond referendum. 13% were undecided, very, very typical. 15% said no. Now, the purple bars. This is our, again, 75% of your community, so this is the one we need to look at the closest. 52% said definitely yes or probably yes. 10% were undecided, very typical, and 38% said probably no or definitely no. So, what do we do with these numbers? I will show you on the next slide how we, we account for the distribution of population. What we do is, because the staff make up less than 1%, we don't weight that within this. We really just focus on the 25% of parents, the 75% of non-parents, non-staff, and we weight it according to the distribution of the population. So, again, 25% of the, of the parents voted at a 72% approval rate. The non-parents, non-staff that make up 75% of your population were at a 52% approval rate. So, when we combine those two groups, right now, our prediction would be, be around a 57% probably yes or definitely yes rate. Again, then back to our margin for error, plus or minus 2.6%. So, given the fact that you have the, you need, most of our accounts in Michigan, Minnesota, and Wisconsin have to have a 50% plus one vote approval to pass a referendum. North Dakota has a 60% threshold that you all know very well. Right now, we're very, very close, quite honestly, too close to call. One thing I do want to point out, though, and I've talked to, to Dr. Luton about this, until about 18 months ago, our company would, would factor in the undecideds. And there was a time where this slide would have included accounting for those, those undecideds, because we had tracked the data for several, several years, that typically about one-third of the undecideds vote yes. Well, if you took one-third of the undecideds from the non-parents, non-staff, roughly 3%, and one-third of the parents, roughly 4% of those, and weighted those, a case could be made that we could get you to that 60% or slightly above prediction rate. But in the last 18 months, that one-third has not held true as reliable. We attribute it to inflation and the economy, and so that is not something we've been able to count on very, very statistically reliably the last 18 months. So, I don't, I don't want to roll that into the numbers tonight and paint an overly optimistic picture of things. You definitely have a majority of voters that are on board with this project. What we're not sure of is, can we get to the, the supermajority of that 60% to have the vote pass? But we did ask more questions in the survey, and then I want to pause for questions. We also looked at the elementary school options. We asked them, would you support us expanding Hart River Elementary School? And that elementary expansion came with an additional cost of $5 million. And we educated them on that tax impact, the base plan plus Hart River, and then the base plan with, with an all-new elementary school. We put those tax numbers right in front of all your residents. And then we asked the question, how would you feel about the $5 million renovation and expansion? Again, staff were most supportive. Again, staff were most supportive, parents to a lesser extent, non-parents, non-staff, and even lesser extent. And so taking that weighted approach, the news is much more clear as far as the addition question. We landed a forty point eight percent weighted prediction of support for the addition. And then when we asked for the, the twenty-five uh miller, million dollar question of building a new elementary school, the statistics were shockingly similar. Sixty-six percent of staff support, fifty percent amongst the parents, thirty-seven for the non-parents, non-staff. And you're within just a few tenths on even building a new elementary school. So the, the picture for, for um doing anything at the elementary school level is not favorable at this time. While we were surveying your, your parents and your residents, we felt it was a good time to ask a few performance questions. We make them part of our baseline presentation and every survey we do, we ask these same four questions. Could you please rate the district in the four areas of delivering a high-quality education, keeping the public informed, managing funds appropriately, and building pride in the community? The scale we asked and the rates of the district on is on a scale of one to four, one being poor, four being great. And so the, the true median is a two point five. And we love to see as many scores approaching or above three as possible in that good and moving towards great rank. Now disaggregated by group, you see the staff had most of all four of those areas approaching or above three. The parents were a bit below that. And the non-parents, non-staff further below that, particularly in the area of managing funds. The next slide, what we do is we combine all of the results. So that you can see when you blend all three populations together. Delivering a high-quality education, fifty-nine percent combined gave you a good or great score for an average of two point seven six. Keeping the public informed, sixty percent for an average of two point seven three. And managing funds appropriately, forty-five percent good or great for an average of two point four nine. Building pride in the community, fifty-two percent for an average of two point six four. And then we always use on our surveys of the community a closing question and it's always the same question. On a scale of zero to ten, how likely would you be to recommend the district to a friend or family member? Your average came in at six point two three. So well above the neutral score. Um and you see, you see the distribution is fourteen percent gave you a ten, another seven percent and eight, or a nine, seventeen percent and eight, and so on. The reason we ask this question is, is because over the years of us surveying, we have found that there's a very high correlation between this score and referendum success. We have found scores in the seven to seven and a half range and above have had very good referendum success. Because quite honestly, if they're very happy with things and would recommend the district to a friend or family member, they're also much more inclined to see their taxes go up a bit to support remodeling of the school. We've actually been presenting at a few conferences on how reliably this metric correlates to referendum success. Right now, you're not quite at the score we'd like to see, but I thought the board would be interested to see these uh these distributions nonetheless. What I found interesting is how high the neutral score is. They're not uh negative on the district, they're just right there in the middle um at twenty-five percent. And it was nice to see that there are not that many populated in the zero to four range, very much in the little single digits. So it's that neutral group that we maybe would like to pull up over ten. So in summary, we always try to boil all that data and all that, that, those, those statistics into a what did we learn? Well, here's what we learned. When it comes to pursuing a bond, a majority of staff, parents, and a plurality of non-parents, non-staff support the district pursuing a bond referendum to update and expand the schools. You had very good support for some level of bond. Second item, base plan support, the sixty-nine million dollar question. A majority of all subgroups support a bond referendum to update the high school. That was very clear at fifty-seven percent. When we weighted the support, it still remains slightly below the sixty percent threshold that you need to pass a bond referendum. But make no mistake, there's very strong support in the community to do something at the high school in the world of a bond referendum. Now, when it comes to Hart River Elementary, neither elementary option would have support if put on the ballot at this time. So at, this is the point in the, the presentation where I'd like to pause and take any and all questions the board would have for me on behalf of, of our research, um our surveying process, and our findings.
Do we have any questions?
Got a question. Um, one of the questions I would just have, but with respect to the elementary school part, and I know we can speculate and that's part of what you do when you get data back is try to understand why that isn't as supported as the idea of a high school. So I could, I could guess that with respect to the high school, that was um something we pushed. We had a, a rever- referendum in the past and that was more of a focus than anything else at that time. And so I feel like maybe um it's taken a lot of, for the public and the bigger groups to understand that that's a, a bigger perceived need for a district than maybe the elementary schools. But is it, is there any correlation to where things go? In other words, one of the thoughts I had is if we had asked the first question about the elementary school and then asked the second question about the high school, if there'd be any difference? I mean, is there any data that would suggest that once people said yes to sixty-nine million, now they're like, well, you're throwing another five million on top of it, that's not as palatable or?
Yeah.
Is that, I don't know, what are your thoughts?
Yeah, that, no, that's an excellent question. I'm glad you asked it. Um quite honestly, across all of our surveys, and we do roughly, oh, I would say a hundred to a hundred and twenty of these a year, roughly about forty to, to sixty of these each semester, always six months in advance of the potential vote. I would tell you that invariably the base question gets the most support because what they're counting on is they're counting on district administration, your residents are counting on the school board and district administration to educate them on what is most important. So by you putting the high school first and making that your base question, they're, they're trusting and assuming that that is the most pressing need. Um and we see this all the time and, and that's our, that's our strategy is to um, again, and I want to be very clear, we are, we are here to gather information to guide you. We're not here, uh when I left my school district, I had a friend say, oh, you're going to that company that sells referendums. Well, we don't, we don't sell them. We educate about them so that school boards can make prudent decisions with their superintendent on what to do next. Uh we, we pride ourselves on being independent of the process and giving you good advice. In fact, I don't know if the board has heard these, these statistics from Dr. Luton or not, but um we are, we have a ninety-five percent reliability rate in, in our history of twenty-one years in the state of Wisconsin, where the data matches the vote. As we've expanded in Minnesota, we're ninety-seven for ninety-seven. On our ninety-seven projects we've done in Minnesota, we've never been wrong. That doesn't mean it's passed, that means that our data, if we said it won't pass, also held true if they put it towards a vote, that it, that it did not pass when we said that the votes weren't there. So again, back to your question. We always try to prioritize, uh we did this in a suburban Milwaukee district recently. Elementary school is first, high school boilers and chillers were second. Then we went to a new art, music, and choir wing, third, and a turf dome athletic facility, fourth. Well, the first two got support and ultimately on the ballot passed, the third and fourth did not. And it was based on order because the order is based on urgency, quite honestly. We always say, put the kids' most urgent needs first and those things can maybe wait for later. Um I was talking with Dr. Luton the last several weeks as we looked at these results and we had to pass four referendums in twenty-five years, in my twenty-seven years in my district. And we had to do it in small bites, small chunks because um once you got one referendum passed, then we saw where momentum would build and they say, okay, we got that new elementary built, now what are we going to do about the middle school? And then we got that middle school built, then, okay, now we can talk about maybe having a fighter in space instead of a multipurpose gymnasium where we have sports and concerts and theater and every, everybody's trying to schedule first because it's, there's not enough space for all the activities. So um I think what, to, to expand on your question a bit, I think your community probably down the line will say, okay, now, when is it time for that elementary to get some attention? But right now their focus is, is on you prioritizing that next school.
Thank you.
You bet.
Any other questions?
Little questions, if anyone else is gonna ask. Part of this, I, I wonder how much is tied in, I'm gonna call it like a pain threshold. In other words, I go back to thinking with the high school, I think the first time around, we kind of got the word out and was um maybe didn't sink, uh sink into people, or maybe they didn't see it firsthand. So years removed from that, I feel like more folks have been in the high school, they've seen the strain, they understand the aging building, it's become uh more of an accepted fact that that's needed. And I think of the elementary schools and I think of our idea to do that, we're looking down the road a little bit and saying, we're gonna, we look at the projected numbers and we know there's going to be crowded and crowded classrooms makes for um impacts learning, it makes for unhappy teachers, and then that pain kind of seeps its way into the community. And so perhaps what you're saying too as well is sometimes these things have to go in stages. Um so everybody kind of gets on the same page with that. So while it'd be wonderful if the public, you know, I don't wanna say trust, because I do think they trust us, but was able to see that we're looking down the road and trying to prevent some of that heartache. Maybe sometimes the reality is some of that heartache and pain has to be felt in order for people to, to move the needle to say, yeah, it's time to do this.
I, I know, I would agree with that, that philosophy. Uh quite honestly, I think we all do this as homeowners. Uh very, very few of my friends and family members, when all these home projects are done, have to do them all at once. I know I had to prioritize last year the furnace and the hot water heater and uh some of those other sure would be niceties had to wait because there's only so much, much room in the budget for that. To that end, I'm gonna go back to that slide where we weighed the high school support. Cause there is another point I would like to make for the board's consideration. Again, as we look at this fifty-seven percent, couple things, remember, plus or minus two point six percent margin for error. Also account for the fact that I would find it very hard to believe that every one of those undecideds would move to no. They're saying they're undecided, meaning they may need more information. Um and then a third point of consideration that makes that fifty-seven percent very much too close to call. But I can't stress you enough, you have majority support. Now it's what about, what, what would you need to get to sixty percent? My theory, having done this work, is I think they need, they need more information from you. And it's not easy work. Um Marcus and I have talked about this um lots of presentations at the Lions Club, Rotary. Each of the schools, we held a listening session at every one of the schools in our district to pull in that age of parent to hear more about what's going on. But there's one more point, as they're taking the survey, they're probably taking it through the lens of all of the tax impact. Now you know very clearly that there's not an appetite for the elementary scope of project. So I think part of your communication that would be very helpful to you is to go back and say, that's off the table, we heard you loud and clear. And all of our eggs are going in the high school basket at this time. Because there may be people that said no to the high school because they were also no to the elementary because they didn't have the stomach for all of it within their family economy. I can't help but speculate and wonder for you as a district. Um because quite honestly, as I told you, I'm not here to sell a referendum, but I care about kids. I worked in education for twenty-seven years for the same school district in rural um Wisconsin. And I like to see these things go through because it only improves conditions for our teachers. And those are getting to be harder to come by. You want to have good working conditions for the talented staff you have. And you want to have optimum conditions for the very reason we open the doors every day and that's for those kids. And so I can't help but think if you pull the elementary off the table and go back to your public with the communication strategies that we told you they want to hear from you a kid, um whether that's a newsletter, um on the website, local newspaper, um if you can reach out to them and let them know uh what, what you've learned through this process. And see how people feel if you pull the elementary project off the table and just focus on the most urgent need at the high school. I have to believe that I could see a situation where you could get an order of six feet um and, and pass this if you reposition the district. And prioritize what, what the ask is. So again, very good point. Um I think the, that, that whole idea of the elementary and the priorities is something you as a board and, and Dr. Luton uh will need to discuss as you report these findings back to your community. And I was, I was very pleased to see that fifty-seven percent they're given. It's a large ask um when you add it all together across all three potential projects.
I think to Mr. Seeks' point, you know, we have prioritized the high school and the public's told us that. I mean, the public, you know, anybody who's been in the high school and seen the overcrowding, um anybody who's been in the high school gymnasium, knowing we don't have air in there, anybody who knows our systems are aging and the HVAC system's quite old, uh anybody who's um, you know, seen the, what happened this winter with some of our aging pipes. I think that's probably why there's a lot more appetite for, we gotta do something at the high school, right? Both for um aging systems but also um for space, so.
I think I, might may add on top of that, just one more thing too is that one of the things I'm proud of is after that last referendum failed, former superintendent Dr. Hocke, we went to the community and said, okay, well, what do we do now? And so there was a lot of um alternatives that the, the community encouraged us to do, which is zero hour classes, working with DSU and doing some things, the, the idea of having CT at a north campus. So we implemented all of those things that the community asked us to do.
Online learning also.
Right, so online learning and so I think my guess is that support is higher this time around because the community acknowledges and understands that we did everything we can do. And now we're at the point where, you know, we need to possibly do a referendum again to make this work, so.
It is, it is remarkable for me as we work with different accounts. Uh we have an account in Wisconsin where the architect told them they could do sixty million dollars of work on this old high school and none of it would be visible to the public eye because it was all roofs, boilers, chillers, and things um behind walls that needed to be addressed. So um to get to a sixty-nine million dollar item for your high school is not shocking to us at, at all as a company because we see these all over the country and it's, it's just very costly to do improvements to quality buildings and, and get them up to speed. But everyone that we work with, they're doing these secured entrances. It's, it's the time for it and there's just, it's, there's the need to secure things and make sure our schools are safe for kids.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, Mr. Severs, we appreciate the time you've taken to share these survey results with us. And if we have any other questions, we'll definitely reach out to you.
By all means, thank you so much. And again, it was a pleasure working with you. Um Dr. Luton has this PowerPoint. So again, this is your data, this is your presentation, use it any way you want, whether it's on your website, uh in these public meetings. Uh again, we, we put this together for you to use down the line. So uh my best to you and uh I, I plan to stay in touch because I, I, I'm excited to see what next steps you take and, and wishing you all the best. So thanks for serving on the board, such a critical role for your community and, and my best to you. Uh Dr. Luton, we'll be in touch, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to our next topic, we have Mrs. Kilwin, West Dakota Parent and Family Resource Center. Welcome.
Hello there. You know, I've been fretting all day because I knew I was going to be presenting after this very exciting um presentation. So I thought, oh my goodness. Thank you all for your time. Um you know, I come here once, once a year to be able to give you information and this year I decided I wanted to be as techno-savvy as everyone else. And I did prepare some PowerPoint slides. So, and Twila, will you advance them for me or I can? Okay, okay, good. There you go. Um every year when I come, I always like to highlight um when the parent center began to provide services in our community. Um, every year when I come, I always like to highlight, um, when the parent center began to provide services in our community because I believe that it really is a reflection on Dickinson Public Schools. And its belief and its vision on how to help our students have greater success by reaching out and engaging families. And we've been doing that for a really long time. As you all know, I am the Partners in Parenting Coordinator for the school district. And I work towards greater family engagement each and every day, however that may look. I provide parent education and parent support. In twenty fifteen, I took on the additional role of the homeless liaison. And in twenty eighteen, I took on the additional role of foster care liaison. So I always think it's important that I give you an additional piece of information. So in twenty fifteen and in twenty sixteen, my very first year, our district had no, um, means of tracking our students who were in homeless situations. So in twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, we identified twenty-five students our very first year. This school year, we identified seventy-four students. Now, between twenty fifteen, sixteen and now, we have had as high as ninety-nine students. But twenty-five was the lowest number of students that we've identified. So my role is to be able to reach out to these families, helping them to find resources in the community and what are things that we can do as Dickinson Public Schools to help so that their students have greater success. Sometimes they may, may need transportation, sometimes they may, may need after-school support. There are lots of different needs by families. Interestingly, out of those seventy-four students, twenty-one of them moved out of our district before the end of the school year. So twenty-one of them may have moved, or some of those students may have moved before even getting to their first day of school. Some may have moved within three weeks, a month, or three months. But twenty-one of those seventy-four students are moved out, which makes it hard for our teachers in the classroom, but it also makes it really hard for our students when they are trying to gear up to come into a new school and then all of a sudden are only here for a very short period of time. Foster care, when I became the foster care liaison in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, we ident- there were twenty-five students. And this year there were twenty-three. And so as the liaison in that role, my hope is to always bridge the gap between that human services, um, sector and our education sector. So we can really, um, through greater collaboration, meet the needs of our students who are in foster care. So I believe in partnership with our school social workers, our school counselors, this really, we've really worked hard to close that gap and we've done a really good job. So, last year I had told you I had had an opportunity to have a training with Stephen Constantino, who works with the state of North Dakota, in helping us with DPI and having greater family engagement. He also encourages us to have goals. So my goals this past school year was to get to know families even more in what I am doing. To build stronger, positive relationships even more, to meaningfully involve families, to really help to strengthen the family engagement done by West Dakota. This year, I facilitated eighty-seven parent programs which were four weeks or less. Meaning, maybe we met once a week for four weeks, we might've met for four hours one time, but we did eighty-seven of those programs. Fifteen programs were provided that were five or more week series parent workshops. There were two hundred and twenty-seven either one-to-one calls or in-person face-to-face parent meetings, um, done at the center. I was able to reach one thousand one hundred and seventy-two adults of children in our school district. All the while, we implemented the core programming for our schools, so our fifth grade changing program, puberty education, sixth grade, um, changing program, as well as our gearing ups, gearing up for kindergarten and gearing up for middle school, which continued to be successful. So, in the gearing up program, I always talk about it, and I thought, this year I wanted to ask parents if they'd be willing to come and visit with all of you so you weren't just hearing from me. But, and most times the room is silent like crickets. And this year I had so many who were wanting to come that I thought, oh, I can't pick just one. So I have some photos here, and I just wanna talk a little bit to a couple of them. So the photo that you see up on the left, that parent and that student are engaged with that teacher doing a science lesson. And they are both learning why raisins sometimes float and why they don't. The coolest thing is look how engaged that parent is. What I can tell you is when gearing up for kindergarten ended, that family was very sad. But they have continued to come to the center to get more activities to do at home. So they are engaged and that little boy is fully ready for kindergarten this coming fall. Down on the bottom left, that parent and that child, they are so busy that they don't always get the time to interact one-on-one doing sorting and counting and doing those educational activities. That child was so engaged and excited that their parent was one-on-one with them that whole period of time. The goal in gearing up for kindergarten is really to engage those parents, engage those, those students so that they can learn and then take it home and replicate it at home. When parents and students are replicating at home what our students will be doing in school, we have students who are coming who are much more prepared and ready to learn. Also, we have more parents who are supportive of our school. When they understand what kids are doing in the classroom, they are more likely to be more involved, and that's always my goal. So these were just a couple. The, um, photo up on the top right, I don't know, you can't see her quite very well, but that's Rhinestone Rhonda up there. And she is very involved in gearing up for kindergarten, in the gearing ups, period. Um, and her literacy engagement has transformed the gearing up programs. Those kids are so excited to get books in their hands, and they are coming back, bringing them back and picking out more on a regular basis. It really has transformed the programs. So I am so excited to be able to, um, share that photo as well. We also did the gearing up for middle school program, and the, most times I offer gearing up for middle school twice. So two, three-week sessions. This year we were only able to do one. So we had over a hundred families, that's a lot of families to navigate on a night. But it was a great response, and you can see parents were very engaged. Whether it is parents who have children who have special needs, which we made sure there were lots of opportunities for support. Um, we provided a meal which broke down the barriers, um, that would keep families from coming. And this year, we were working with Melinda Frederick, and she helped us learn that literacy is not just reading a book. And we had math walkabouts, and parents, if you look on that upper, upper right corner, parents were so engaged. Like, they just were so curious about math and how math has changed. So it was a great opportunity for our staff to have great conversations with those parents as well. As always, I'm always trying to push our teachers to do just a little bit more. And parents consistently have given us feedback that they wanted an opportunity to be in the classroom with their child during gearing up for middle school. So the bottom photos are of parents who are in the classroom, um, participating in, um, how to make friends, how to, um, the making friend skills, and parents were enjoying these activities so much. The classrooms got a little crowded, but they sure had a whole lot of fun. So, one of the things, or one of the few things that I do at the center is to continually listen to what parents are needing and what they are wanting. And we have consistently gotten questions from parents because I think they may know about gearing up for kindergarten, gearing up for middle school. They wanna know what are some things that we can do at home to get our kids ready for preschool? This comes at a great time because we now have our public preschool. It was just perfect timing. So I am currently in the process of creating our very own gearing up for preschool, which will be implemented this fall at our Hagan Building with our, um, with our preschool. So I am super excited about doing that and I can't wait to report to you. But the reason we are doing it is because parents have been asking. And what greater way to reach out and engage those kiddos that will be entering into our kindergarten than getting them early in the preschool level? So as always, um, I always try to, you know, tell you lots about what the parent center is doing. And I am by far not an expert on our HRS, our, our highly reliable school structure or MTSS structure. But I really wanted to brag just a little bit, not only about the parent center, but about what our school really is doing to engage our families as a whole. And when I created this slide, I started with the sense of belonging because every one of our schools and our staff work hard to develop relationships and create that sense of belonging in our schools. And we do that in many ways, also offering the parent center and resources. Those things I've highlighted in red are the parent center. But there are lots of other things. And I just wanted you to see how all of that fits together to really, um, show you how we are actively engaged as a district to reach out and meet the needs of our families so that we can help our students have greater success. So this year, this is my last slide, this year, um, all of the programs, um, worked to foster continuous cooperative dialogue with parents. We wanted to make sure that there was take-home and parents could come back so we could continue to have conversations. Programs allowed opportunities for families to participate in that learning to be an active partner. It worked to motivate families to contribute. We wanted to hear back from them. I wanted to be a better listener. It invited family feedback. We always look to the present and the future, and sometimes I may think I know what should be offered, but really it is about me listening and hearing what their needs are. And then I'm always hoping to, um, yield positive results, and so I can, I wanna continue to have parents come to the center and continue to be able to provide this information for you, so. I appreciate your time. Does anybody have any thoughts or questions? And I know I went long, longer than ten minutes, I'm sorry.
Any questions?
I just commend Stacy, I mean, she, amazing job, eleven seventy-eight, that's a pretty high number of conversations and-
I'm so proud of it.
Yeah, do you have like a clicker?
Yeah.
Well, and that parent involvement is such a huge component of student success.
It just is.
I think those programs are definitely, and they've grown, I've seen them grow, so thank you for what you guys do for our students and their families.
I just love working with parents because through them, our students can achieve so much. And so through having that conversation, so.
Well, thank you. Any other questions? Okay. We are now moving on to our board goals and,
All right.
I believe, Dr. Luton, right?
Yeah, and I'll try and, uh, be succinct, I guess. This month I'm gonna cover, uh, our reading goals. We have our third grade reading goal, increasing scores, and then increasing eighth grade math, and then obviously choice ready. Uh, and so next month will be math, and then August will be choice ready. Hopefully that data will be available through the state, uh, that we can access, so. When it comes to our goal this year, we met what we set we were gonna do. So last year, uh, we, and that's at the very top, we had forty-two percent of our students proficient, which is above the state average. Uh, and this year, uh, we have this trend line, which I'll show in a little bit, we've set a goal for being at forty-three percent. So we, we actually hit it. It was only a one percent growth. But next year, we hit two pers- we want two percent, the following year, two, three, five. So as we build, uh, the capacity in these kids, we just start to see them increase. Some of those progress measures, we didn't set those the same, they're more like just a flat line. So we're gonna see growth, but we're not gonna see where we met our goal. And you can see that up here, so on that first sheet, you can see goal one, forty-two percent last year, forty-three percent this year. Spring of twenty seventeen will be fifty-five, so we hit our goal this year and shows we're on track. When it comes to that second and first grade, uh, we didn't meet our goal. Uh, we're, we're trying to gain thirteen points on the NWA two. If you remember, we give that in the fall, winter and spring. Uh, we did have growth in both first and, or second and first grade, uh, but we didn't meet our goal quite where we wanted to be. And I'll show some of the subcategories here in a little bit. When it comes to kindergarten, if you remember, we didn't give the NWA to kindergartners until this year, so we had to set a baseline, which was set this year. And then a lot of that work, a lot of that, how are we gonna do this, uh, has been on that science of reading and trying to keep some of the good stuff we're doing, but also some of that work on phonics where we needed to provide a little bit more resources for our teachers, uh, who are really doing a great job. You'll see under the what, so we're trying to increase thirteen percent, uh, in each, uh, in the, the overall goal, so forty-two to fifty-five. Uh, and the same on the NWA for overall, and then the subcategories are at twenty percent, we're increasing over the next five years or four, four, four years left. And that was because we want that gap to close, right? We want EL students to get closer and closer to the average, right? We want disability, students with a disability get closer and closer to the average. So, the only thing I'd add to this page on the how, really the how is, uh, much of what we reported a couple of months ago on what we're doing with reading. Uh, but I would add that all of our school improvement camps, we only have one left in an elementary, but all of them, uh, focused on this data. This and other things too. Again, academics isn't everything, but it is a very important part of what we do, so. All of our school improvement camps focused on data. So if you turn the page, uh, to page two, that's really just our goal, uh, so that's the overall goal. And you can see that slow trend line up where next year we're at forty, uh, this year we're at forty-three, next year forty-five, forty-seven, fifty, and then fifty-five. So you can see us, we did meet our goal this year, we increased, uh, academic achievement on that NDSA. Turn the page to the next one, that's that first progress measure, and that has to do with second grade students and their NWA MAP score. So moving from, thank you, Twila, I'll just let her, she does a better job than me. Uh, moving from fifty-one percent, plus thirteen is sixty-four, right? So you can see we increased, we did increase one point, but it wasn't quite where we wanted to be. And you can kinda see that trend line's just broken just a little bit on the overall average. Uh, you can see our EL scores went way up, but that's because you're gonna see the, the fewer students you have in a, in a sample, right? The more variance you're gonna have. So last year we couldn't report because we, uh, we had such a small number, so that's now our baseline at twenty-five. Uh, disability went down a little bit, and our free and reduced went, uh, up and is on track, so. Again, overall, just slightly not quite on track, but again, seeing an improvement. If you move to first grade, the next one, I see the same thing, right? Improvement overall, you got a couple categories that are demographics that dropped, free and reduced lunch. I was trying to think about why that happened, I mean, that's a pretty big drop. And this is my only explanation, two things, uh, sometimes the data in SLEDs doesn't load very well, I hate to say that, um, but if- But if you remember, we had to not have a progress measure one month because there was some data that was wrong in SLEDs. The other probably more likely is that in twenty-one, twenty-two, we still had free lunches. And so, I don't know how accurate that data was. Where this year now, we had to go back and try and get those people to fill out the Free and Reduced Lunch app. So, I'm guessing that sample is a little bit more legit. As you know, last year, they were the same as the average, right? So, I think it's probably a little bit more legit. You see our disability met its goal. And our EL number, which would be our lowest sample, went down. Moving on to kindergarten, again, we didn't have any data last year. But you can see this spring, which is where we grabbed our baseline, sixty-nine percent. So, we're shooting for that eighty-two in a couple of years. Interesting enough, disability and limited English proficiency, they both were at that fifty-three mark, fifty-two mark. Or fifty, I can't even, yeah, fifty-three. There isn't a Free and Reduced Lunch on here. I don't know if that's a SLEDs issue and it didn't pull that data out. Or if there's, it's kindergarten, so you probably do have fewer kids filling it out, the app out, or parents filling the app out. But it didn't show up in the data on SLEDs. The next page, that's reading fluency. So, again, you know, accurate reading, speed of reading, expression, those types of things. Some of that work we've been doing, we've provided teachers with those intervention resources. If you remember, in the fall, we said, this probably isn't a good baseline because we gave the test so late. So, you're comparing it to everybody else, right? So, that number was probably higher than it should have been. But even so, we saw that dip in the winter. And then, look at what happened. Like, we've seen an increase both in second grade. And then, if you go to third grade, again, another hefty increase. So, kudos to those teachers that are doing, learning that hard work, those principals, those coaches, those interventionists. Obviously, when you start to read more fluently, then eventually, comprehension becomes easier. And you see that, you build those skills. And eventually, you have enough of those skills. And then, everything kind of pops into place. So, that is as succinct as I could make that one. I wish I could spend more time on it. But any, any questions on any of those?
You know, I realize this is new. And so, some of it, I feel like, too, like you said, it's kind of figuring things out a little bit. Sometimes the sample's small. I think of second, English second learners, that can shift people moving in and out. There's all kinds of variables. So, is there freedom in this to like, I mean, can you adjust goal? I mean, at some point, might you say, well, now that we have more data, this goal is not as realistic as you want to make. I mean, I'm not saying do that now, but at some point, I would imagine you could do that.
Well, Ms. Elliott might be listening. And she would say no. She would say, you can always increase your goal, but you shouldn't go backwards. But I think that's important. You know, Dickinson being in a community that has a lot of in-and-out migration, you know, those NWA, NDSA scores, you know, they show up if you've had a student for one calendar year, right? So, even I would argue, though, if a kid comes to our district and he's three years behind, we're going to do our darndest to help that family and that kid. But one calendar year is, to gain three grades in one calendar year is not easy. Doable, not easy. NWA is just everybody, is a sample. So, when you have, you know, five-hundred-and-fifty in-and-outs last year, and we know through our sampling, we know that kids coming into our district are achieving lower on the NWA in math and reading than kids that we've had. When we get them for a while, they do well. They're doing better, right? So, just that alone definitely influences those scores, right?
Any other questions? Okay, hearing none. We will move on now to our last item under informational topics. And that's the bid for our 2023-2027 transportation contract for consideration. And Dr. Luton, I believe you.
Yeah, I can just hit that. We did receive the bid from Harlow's Bus Service about a week and a half, or two Fridays ago. Have had time to look at it completely. And we're kind of in the middle of trying to amend a few of those things. So, happy Harlow's got it. There's a few changes in there we'd like to see changed just for the district. So, we'll have something for the July eleventh board meeting, I believe. So, I think it's the eleventh.
I believe it's the tenth.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to our action topics. The first one is our 2023-2024 Average Daily Membership Report. Do we have a motion?
Madam President.
Mrs. Schwartz.
I move to approve the 2022-2023 Average Daily Membership Report as presented.
Thank you, Mrs. Schwartz. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Wilkie. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, vote nay. Okay, motion carries. Our next item is our 2023-2024 Transportation Routes Report. Do we have a motion?
Madam President.
Mrs. Schwartz.
I move to approve the 2022-2023 Dickinson Public Schools Transportation Routes Report as presented.
Thank you, Mrs. Schwartz. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Wilkie. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, vote nay. Okay, motion carries. Next item is Renew Superintendent's Contract.
Madam President.
Mr. Seeks.
I move to approve the 2023-2025 Contract for Superintendent Dr. Marcus Luton.
Thank you, Mr. Seeks. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Mrs. Schwartz. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. We will call for a roll call vote this time. We'll start with Mr. Wilkie.
Aye.
Mr. Rudekowski.
Aye.
Mrs. Schwartz.
Aye.
Mr. Seeks.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Motion carries. The next item is our Assistant Superintendent's Contract. Do we have a motion?
Madam President.
Mrs. Schwartz.
I move that an evaluation was completed on Assistant Superintendent Keith Harris. And upon review of the evaluation by the board, I move that Assistant Superintendent Keith Harris's evaluation was satisfactory in all areas. I further move to approve the 2023-2024 Contract for Assistant Superintendent Keith Harris.
Thank you, Mrs. Schwartz. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Seeks. Any discussion? Hearing none. We will start with Mr. Rudekowski.
Aye.
Mr. Seeks.
Aye.
Mr. Wilkie.
Aye.
Mrs. Schwartz.
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Motion carries. Next item is Renew Business Manager's Work Agreement. Do we have a motion?
Madam President.
Mrs. Schwartz.
I move that an evaluation was completed on Business Manager Stephanie Hunter. And upon review of the evaluation by the board, I move that Business Manager Hunter's evaluation was satisfactory in all areas. I further move to approve the 2023-2024 Work Agreement for Business Manager Stephanie Hunter.
Thank you, Mr. Schwartz. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Wilkie. Any discussion? Hearing none. We will start with Mrs. Schwartz.
Aye.
Mr. Wilkie.
Aye.
Mr. Rudekowski.
Aye.
Mr. Seeks.
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Motion carries. Our next item is the approval of the 2023-2024 Consolidated Grant Application. Do we have a motion? Mr. Seeks.
I move to approve the 2023-2024 Consolidated Grant Application for Federal Grants, which includes Title I, Title II-A, and Title IV-A as presented.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Mrs. Schwartz. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, vote nay. The motion carries. Our next item is to reaffirm Board Policy First Reading and Final Adoption. Do we have a motion?
Madam President.
Mr. Wilkie.
I move to affirm Board Policy, BFA, Board Superintendent Relations for First and Final Reading with no revisions.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkie. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Mrs. Schwartz. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. We will start with Mr. Rudekowski.
Aye.
Mr. Seeks.
Aye.
Mr. Wilkie.
Aye.
Mrs. Schwartz.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Motion carries. Our next item is Board Policy Adoption Second Reading and Final Adoption. Do we have a motion?
Madam President.
Mr. Wilkie.
I move to adopt Board Policy, DE, Staff Code of Conduct for Second Reading and Final Adoption.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkie. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Mrs. Schwartz. Any discussion?
Madam President.
Mr. Seeks.
I propose an amendment. I'd like to move that, let's see, it's page two of the document. It's section one, just to add to the sentence. Right now, it reads, I'll read the whole sentence. It says, conduct, it says, "In addition to district policies governing staff conduct, each staff member is required to," and it currently reads, "conduct oneself professionally whenever serving in their official capacity as a school district employee,